Welcome back everyone. Calling the meeting back to order from our break. This is our special virtual meeting. At this time, we are going to continue the meeting with the oath of office that will be administered by our city clerk, Mary Gonzalez. Madam Clerk? You have the floor.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And at this time, please lower your volumes. We're gonna proceed administering deals to Commissioner Luciano Suarez, who will serve the city for a period of two years. Commissioner Suarez, please would you join me in administering your oath?
I will.
I will.
In all respects. Under the provisions.
Under the provisions.
Of the charter.
For the charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the city of West Miami. And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge.
The charges.
The duty.
The duty.
Of the office of commissioners.
Of the office of commissioners.
Of the city of West Miami.
For the city of West Miami.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
I'll give you your oath.
You're welcome.
Do you have a call, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Attorney, I do. I have Commissioner Diaz-Padron's phone died. That is why he's not on camera. I have present Commissioner Luciano Suarez and Commissioner Candy Blanca. I'm not sure why they're not on screen. Hold on, they are present here physically. Let me see if I can.
We have Commissioner Blanis.
And we have Commissioner Blanis, yes. And like I said, Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron's phone died. So he was, he's offline. But there are, Commissioner Blanis is the only one that's not present.
Blanis is present.
Well, not present here. Okay, Madam Clerk?
I'm here, I've been here.
I know, I see, I see you, sir.
And we obey the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Florida that I will in all respects of further provisions of the charter and the ordinances of the city of West Miami. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Vice Mayor of the city of West Miami.
And, Madam Mayor, this time I would like your guidance because we have announced and published a swearing-in ceremony for April 20th at 8 o'clock in this commission chambers. So at this time, I requesting your guidance if, if the meeting should be canceled. And anyways, my office will issue a certification of elections, which is my duty. And at that time, on April 20th, I'll issued from my office. But in regards to the meeting, you should take action.
Madam Clerk, considering the emergency order that we are all under, I am going to ask that we postpone that April 20th virtual swearing-in meeting. As long as I have the consensus from the rest of my commission. Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron says yes. Commissioner Candy Blanca, yes. Commissioner Luciano Suarez? Commissioner Suarez? I'd like your consensus to postpone your consensus to postpone the virtue, the swearing-in that was scheduled for April 20th to a later date. The swearing-in ceremony that was scheduled for April 20th. I'm trying to get consensus to postpone that to a later date. Thank you, sir, and Commissioner Suarez. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, that we will be postponing the swearing-in.
Now it is, yes.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Blanis, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, I saw your hand. And Commissioner Blanis as well, my apologies, sir. I'm trying to look at everything at the same time. We will postpone the swearing-in until, I can't give you a date, until we're out of the, of the emergency stay-at-home order. And that once we can gather again. So at this time, I can't tell you until what date. So we're gonna leave that open. Is that acceptable? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, for my oath of office, is it possible that we do it back here? Because my co-host is out here and I need to keep monitoring of the screen. So for my, for my oath of office, instead of doing it, oh, there's no oath of office, never mind. No, that's fine, I don't know. Do I have to do it today?
Yes.
You can have, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. 10-minute break, please. We'll be back at 1:35.
Rodrigo.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron. Present.
Yeah.
Commissioner Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Commissioner Blanis, I saw you, where are you?
Present.
He's there. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes, present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe the last thing for today is the final oath of office.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And we're gonna administer your oath. Mayor Ronda Rodriguez has been elected, re-elected in the city of West Miami and will serve two years as a mayor. So Mayor Rodriguez, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
I, Ronda Rodriguez.
I, Ronda Rodriguez.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of West Miami.
Of the city of West Miami.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of the office of the mayor.
Of the office of the mayor.
Of, of the city of West Miami.
Of the city of West Miami.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You know, this is all weird. I think I'm in the Twilight Zone.
I hear you, Commissioner. It's, it's, it's a little, a little weird for us here, too.
We just have to adjust and adapt. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
Congratulations to all. At this time, Madam Clerk, I am checking, I have no one requesting to join the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you have any calls or emails of anyone trying to get in? If I'm in access for you?
No, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Manager, please. Let, let me, let me unmute you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to the mayor, the vice mayor, commissioners. Congratulations on your reelection. I look forward to working with you on moving the city forward. And I wish you the best of luck in this new tenure in office. Also, I would like to, the record to reflect that I had a call from the District 6 Commissioner, Vice Chair. from the District 6 Commissioner Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa, who was on the line before a meeting that she was scheduled to attend for the county, wanting to extend to you her very best. She wanted to congratulate each and every one of you with your reelection and today for taking your new oath of office again and wishing you the best. So that concludes the message that I had, uh, that I wanted to, the, the record to reflect it. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and thank you to Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa. Thank you for your congratulations, and I'm not sure if I said congratulations to everyone. And, and I, I too look forward to our next two and four years working together. I need.
Congrats to my, my colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, sir. Uh, I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, congratulations, sir.
They need to have a party.